The Town of Farmington. Respecting history, planning the future.
Calling me into order, it is 9 o'clock. Gary, can you listen to the pledge and leave?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Do you have this someone? You want to text them? You want to text Brian?
Yeah, I got it. Oh, good.
First off, I just, to those watching outside and to everyone here, we've now had our first case of COVID-19 in the Hartford area. Unexpected, it was an elderly person who's hospitalized now. Just again, the continuous reminder, continue to wash your hands diligently, try not to touch your face, and social distancing. It's a beautiful day outside, it doesn't mean don't go outside, just don't go outside in groups. If you're in the grocery store, you can still shop, the stores are still open, all our local stores have been getting rave reviews and compliments online for doing a great job taking care of people when they're coming in and serving them well. So you can continue to do things, just try and keep your distance from other people. Other than that, we're going to continue on today. We've gotten through, we had a long day on Thursday, we got through all our items, so now we're actually looking to make approvals on our budget. So we're going to start out with the capital, overall capital. And we'll start with some discussions on capital. Who would like to begin our capital discussion? Oh, we should, before that, actually, we should actually ask for a public comment. Thank you. Public comment, five minutes, name and address, thank you very much, I'm not trying to skip anything.
Geez, I got up early this morning and everything. Come on, guys.
My apologies.
That's right. Tim Kelly, 62 Westview. You know me, I'm not very smart. Look, these are certainly extraordinary times we're living in. Unfortunately, I think they're probably going to get a little worse before they get better, and at least in terms of the economic impact. So we should plan accordingly here. From a capital budget standpoint, which I think is your first item, I would try to primarily focus on the emergency and safety related items. This obviously may not be the year to focus on renovating the Stone House or replacing a school roof that isn't leaking. So, yeah, we're going to have to really skinny that down, and I know we'll get where we need to be there. From a town budget perspective, because of the actuarial change that we got hit sideways with, I would support utilizing some fund balance to make a one-time catch-up payment on the pension liability. I think it's not a big deal whether our rainy day fund is at 14 or 14.5 percent, I mean, we'll eventually get to the coveted 15 percent level, but I think it's better to fix that issue now, at least the rating agencies, than carry an unfunded liability forward. And then on the school side, obviously, we need everybody on the team. This is probably not the year to double up and hire a second high school psychologist. And, you know, based on the experience of the superintendent, assistant superintendent, you know, combined with the confidence they have in our enrollment outlook, you know, perhaps we should budget for one unassigned teacher instead of two. So, I mean, every year we increase, but perhaps, you know, we could increase to headcount as opposed to the four that's in the proposed plan. So again, I appreciate all the time and effort that goes into this process, and I thank you for your deliberations.
Thank you. Any other public comment? Hearing none. I would look to start with a motion for our capital, then we can begin the discussions.
Good, good.
Peter? Motion's on the agenda.
You're flying CJ, you're flying.
I'm flying, sorry, okay. Taking action. Dee?
To make a motion to consider and take action on the proposed 2020-2021 budget.
Second.
Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. Now, a motion for the capital.
I make a motion, uh, ready? I make a motion to take action on the proposed 2020-2021 capital budget.
Second.
Do we need to put in the amount here, and then we discuss the amount at this point?
All right, so right now, maybe we have a general motion, and correct me if I'm wrong with these motions, so you have a general motion, and now you guys want to talk about capital. So what I would suggest is maybe you just talk about capital unless you're ready to actually put a number in. So depending if you want to, no?
No, you got to do-
We'll do the mo-, okay, how about this, tell me if this sounds right, put in the motion of the number that we had on our list right now, the town managers recommended 4,335,983, then we have discussion that we can amend it on.
The only thing you want to do at this point is, you want to go, what changes you want to make, so basically, you want to go through the capital budget and say what change you want to make. So if you want to make a change to Board of Ed technology infrastructure, somebody makes a motion to reduce it or increase it, and then we move on to the next one.
But could they, for the Board of Education, just make a-
Yeah, we just generally make a large, we don't-
A lump sum.
We never put in items in the Board of Education, we just say what they're to the capital.
For capital, you can.
Oh, really, for capital we do?
Capital, you can. The capital budget is your budget, it's not the board's budget.
Okay.
So, I mean, you can give them a lump sum, we ran into this a couple of years ago, where the council did a general reduction to the Board of Ed's capital budget, and quite frankly, it caused more consternation than, um-
Okay.
Than, you know. So I would suggest that unless you have a number, and you just want to give them a number, then that's fine, you could do that, that's your prerogative, but if you have specific items, you can reduce those specific items.
Okay. Thoughts, what are you saying, Kathy?
Again, if you know, if you know what items you would like to do on the board's budget, I think you should probably make motions to reduce it, it's probably easier in the long run. If you need anything from what they talked about at the last meeting, we could probably get that for you, I don't know if you have that information.
I don't have that information. We have a motion on the table, we have a second. I'm going to vote on that, then we'll have discussion, and then we're going to take a short break. Okay, any discussion on the motion on the table to take action on the capital budget? All in, no, discussion, sorry.
Discussion.
Okay, discussion. Now we're going to take a short five-minute break for discussion.
I make a motion to reduce the Board of Education's capital budget by the following: $90,000 technology infrastructure, $450,000 no Wallace roof replacement, $160,000 district-wide mechanical, electrical, and plumbing, $219,000 structural architectural, $25,000 school security, $15,000 school co-compliance, for a total funding reduction of $959,000.
Second.
Discussion. Okay, these were the discuss, these were the reductions that the Board of Ed had mentioned to us the other day, we are just taking advantage of those opportunities that they said existed for reducing the capital this year. Any other discussion? All in favor? Do you have any?
Yeah.
Well, I was just going to say, what does that bring the overall budget down to again?
You're going to run the numbers, or sir?
Well, we're going to run the numbers after we do the town side, because we have some town discussions also. Okay, very good. Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed. Motion passes.
I make a motion to discuss the town side of the budget and potentially what are reductions that we can make on that side.
Second.
Discussion. Kathy, if you could explain, we're looking at a 200,000 reduction in the town side, what would be-
Okay, 200,000. So I think, um, I've been talking to Scott Zanki and Russ in the Highway Department, I think that our bucket truck, this would be something, maybe we can contract out some of that work, and that could be something that we could maybe push off a year. So that would be $105,000. The other item I had, was thinking about, was the rails to trails, the 25,000, that is a banking number that we could push out and not bank that money, but, and just as we all know, the rails to trails, it's coming for maintenance of that, but I think we can, it's only banking, so that would be $25,000 there. And then the last item I was thinking about was in the fire department, the communication upgrade, it's a multi-phase project, I was thinking that instead of 150, we'd go with $75,000 and get them started on that, and also have, let us have an opportunity to still coordinate with the police department and, which we are doing, but just to talk with them and, you know, with the fire department and make sure that all their ducks are in a row with that. So I thought that we could reduce that by 75,000, and I'm doing that off the top of my head, so that comes to 205.
Questions for Kathy? Any of those reductions? Comments?
CJ.
Yes, Ed.
So just to confirm, Kathy, with those reductions, we're not really reducing services, town services at all?
No, I would say not.
Great, thank you.
Any other questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
She got a motion for it.
Yep, that motion passed, yes.
Make it official.
Thank you.
Okay, I make a motion to reduce the capital funding for the town bucket truck account by $105,000. I make a motion to reduce the rails to trails account by $25,000, and I make a motion to reduce the fire communication upgrades by $75,000 for a total reduction of $205,000 for the town's capital budget.
Second.
Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed. Motion passes. Now, are we doing a total capital?
Historically, have we done a total capital? No, okay.
Great. All right, moving on to the operator. I make a motion for the operating-
Yeah, yeah, we'll, we'll need that for after.
And then we'll have a discussion, we can, here, hang on, yeah, I make a motion as it stands, and then we'll have a discussion, then we can make the motion, so I have that rate, 3.2.9.
Okay, I got it, we'll clean it up.
CJ?
Yes.
At this point, would you like to look with those reductions from the capital, what it would look like on your tax and budget worksheet?
That'd be great.
Okay, so right now, Board of Ed's was proposed, the council, the town budgets were proposed, the debt service is still the same, capital budget is now $3,071,983, which is a reduction from the current year of $251,017. So now your total budget is $114,189,250, which brings you to a mill rate of 28.58, 0.61 mills, for a 2.17 percent increase in the tax rate.
Thank you. Can you just leave that there for a second, Joe?
Again, mill rate would be 28.78, I'm sorry, 28.58, mill rate change would be 0.61 increase, it's an increase of 2.17 percent. And then on the overall budget increase would be, overall budget increase would be 2.37 percent at this, at this time.
Any questions for Joe on that? Everybody still writing diligently?
Okay, I'm going to get through this motion. I make a motion that we discuss the town's operating budget as presented.
Second.
Discussion. Questions and concerns with Kathy? You had some concerns when you presented the budget, you want to just go over the areas of concerns you had?
Yeah, I do feel strongly that you should be adding money, either adding money back into the pension account or taking out additional money and then still fund a capital account. So depending on where you go from there, I'll tell you my next one.
What was the amount again for the pension?
$150,000.
Any thoughts on the pension money?
Ed.
Ed, yes.
Ed, yep.
I think it'd be a good idea to put the pension money back in, I just think, and it's generally a bad practice to underfund pensions, and that's been done at the state level for, for decades and has, you know, led to negative results, so I think properly funding the pension would be prudent of us to do.
Okay. And the other areas we were talking about?
I think there's a couple of areas that I would, I would like to see if you could possibly put money back into the budget. The first one is, is in the Public Works Department, that's the, Russ's position, I would not have it as high as a level of position, not a deputy director, but a civil engineer position. I was thinking that maybe $35,000, and that, not that that, and we'd do it half the year, and so then we, you know, start recruiting and doing that, and then the next year it would actually be a full position, because that position's probably, it may not even be a full half a year, but if we found some savings in some different things, because the position's going to be in the, you know, probably in the 75, $80,000 range, but I think if we did $35,000 in that, the other item would be in the Public Works Department, that stormwater for those part-time people, Russ requests three, there's one in the budget right now, if we could possibly put one more in, which is $5,000, that would be another summer help, that would help with the stormwater. And again, one of the things that we were talking about is potentially with these two people that are coming in, maybe that they would have some interest in the civil engineering position, because these would be engineering types of students that we could then maybe become full-time, a full-time employee. And then the last item would be the land acquisition position, and I was saying- $10,000. $10,000 for that, and then a potential of approximately $10,000 out of the maintenance account for the land, so that, but it would only be $10,000 for the operating budget, but we would probably be spending about $20,000 in that account. And that would be for Liz Dolphin, and she would still, and we would, twofold, one, she would still be doing, helping us out, like with our grants and staffing the meeting, but I think we would be in kind of a transition period to about having the new staff, our new town planner and everyone, get her institutional knowledge and start learning about our whole land acquisition program, so that, I think that would be a good idea to do. And I think that equals around $50,000?
Uh, equal to.
50, 150, yeah. $50,000 of-
Plus the 150.
Plus the 150, so that goes to about- 200. 200,000.
Okay, any thoughts on the three positions?
Just on the deputy position for, for Russ, if we don't fill this, how much potentially are we losing on them not doing the grants or the design work?
Well, you have a couple things that are going on, is that, you have then Russ being the only professional engineer in the group, so you have twofold, you have him having to do grants and things of that nature, which, and his capacity, how much time when he's directing the rest of the public works area. And second, it's some of the work that Russ is going to have to do as an engineer is really, Russ is much more skilled than that, and so having a civil engineer, you're having, you're paying a lot of money to a town engineer to do very low-level work, and so that's not really a good practice either. And so it's really about, you know, we could very much lose on some grants, because it's just Russ's capacity of how much he can actually do. So I, we, I think that, you know, I had mentioned at the last meeting that that position probably would not be the position that I would get rid of out of the budget, the only reason why I did it, it was that it was vacant at the time, but we have been actively recruiting for it.
So it sounds like based on some of the projects he, he mentioned coming up, that this person, we would need that person to help in the management of those projects, partnering with the state on that type of stuff?
Absolutely.
And then for anything down the road that we, we have potentially coming, they could already start doing the legwork on any grant monies or, or doing the engineering work on, on those projects or planning for them?
Absolutely.
So it seems to be this person will pay for themselves in pretty short order, at least based on the money we're giving it right now?
Yeah, I would think so.
Okay.
Other questions or comments? Hearing none, that would be, we would need a motion to amend?
Wait, I'm sorry. Sorry, I'm listening.
Still, so am I. Okay, so I'll read this first motion. Okay, and this will be the amendment?
No, just make a move.
Motion on this, okay, on what we just discussed here.
Just make one motion, making those, whatever changes. You just, just make one motion with whatever changes you're going to make.
There are four.
There's four.
You can put those four changes in one motion, you can motion to change, to amend the previous motion-
Right.
Adding back in $150,000, adding in the 35, the 5, and the 10.
But it's just for the minutes you want it set in a certain way.
Okay, if you want to do it as each four separate motions, that's fine.
Yeah, I think that, just for the minutes, it'll be easier.
That's fine, good, we're good.
Okay, I'll just make this motion, then I'll read in the other things, and if I do it wrong, let me know. To make a motion to increase the town's operating budget benefits pension account by $150,000 to make, to increase the town's operating-
Well, just do, is that all the first, just do one at a time, 150, Joe?
Second.
Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed. Motion passes.
I make a motion to increase the town's operating budget engineering full-time account by $35,000 for a engineering position.
Second.
Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes.
To make a motion to increase the town's operating budget engineering seasonal account by $5,000 for a summer help position.
Second.
Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes.
To make a motion to increase the town's operating budget, town manager part-time account by $10,000.
Second.
Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. Now, I'm assuming we have to make the full, we've just amended the previous motion with these four items, so now we're just voting on the original motion.
Right, if you're done with the town budget, then just-
Yes. Are there any other comments or questions on the town budget? Do you all want to see what that looks like up on the board with the town budget? If we put these dollars back into the town, could we see what that does to their numbers? That's 200,000 going into the town budget.
Okay, so now you made the change to the town budget, you added 200,000, so now the town budget's $31,478,237, an increase of $1,105,133, it's a 3.64 percent increase. The overall budget increase now stands at 2.55 percent. And the taxes now would go up, the mill rate would now be 28.63 mills, an increase of 0.66 mills or 2.37 percent.
Questions, comments, discussions on this? Okay, we have a motion on the table, second, all in favor on the overall capital budget?
Town.
Town budget, thank you. The overall town operating budget. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed. Motion passes.
Now, you guys remember for the Board of Education side of the budget, if you're going to do anything, you don't individualize it, it's just a dollar amount.
Yep.
Can we take a five-minute break? I make a motion to reduce the Board of Education's operating budget by $308,175.
Second.
Scott?
And Joe, can we see what that looks like, please?
I think Joe's making it smaller, just so I have to put on my glasses here.
So now the Board of Education budget, that reduction would be $70,078,406, it's $2,369,801 increase, or 3.5 percent. Town budget's still the same at $31,478,237. Total, overall budget is $1,140,810,75, which is a 2.28 percent increase, which brings your tax increase, or your mill rate to 28.55 mills, 0.58 increase, or 2.07 percent.
Oh, that's a great idea.
Joe, could you just repeat again the, the town and, or-
Sure.
The Board, sorry, the Board of Ed increase on their-
Sure, Board of Ed increase, budget would be $70,078,406, that's a, that's a dollar increase of $2,369,801, or 3.5 percent. The town budget would be $31,478,237, a dollar increase of $1,105,133, a percent increase of 3.64 percent. Debt service would still be at a 0.04 percent increase, your capital improvements is a reduction from the prior year of $251,001.7, or 7.33 percent decrease. Overall, the budget would be $114,081,075, it's an overall increase of $2,537,998, or a 2.28 percent increase.
Thank you. I'm sorry, Joe, I apologize, I'm trying to keep up with you, can you, with that change, can you give the overall town impacts again?
Sure, the tax impact, the mill rate would then go to 28.55 mills, which is a 0.58 mill increase, it's a percent change of 2.07 percent.
And that's an increase?
Yeah.
A 2.07.
Okay. Obviously, for me personally, this is near and dear to my heart, having previously, recently served as board chair, and looking at the numbers, there's some, you know, issues or questions I may have relative to the information that Kathy spoke to us last night, and I don't know, Kathy Lonsky, can Kathy come to the table, or? Kathy Reader?
Sure.
Okay, okay, there's the party. Can you just come up, Kathy, and just maybe give an overview, I mean, we talked a little bit about, you know, the summer school program and just, you know, other things, so that was about a number of 160, I think, and if you could just maybe address what the delta between that and let's say, the other, the number as is, which was 308-
308.
between that and let's say the other, the number as is, which was 308,175?
I'll begin by saying things have changed a lot for us since we presented the budget, and there are a lot of unknowns. One is, is the two-week closure that we have enough? We are probably, just given what we're hearing from the state and national levels, looks like that could be extended, which presents some issues with taking away summer school funding if we had to provide something in the summer, but just a few days ago, we were not thinking about a closure happening next week and the week after. I would say Kathy and I see this as a moment-by-moment situation where things have to adjust very, very quickly. So, you know, the 160,000 is for K-8, regular education students, it impacts about 225 students, but if we were out for an extended amount of time, I'm not sure what our plans would be for the summer and whether we would need to do something at that point. Other than that, beyond that, it definitely is staffing, and it does mean that we would have to lay individuals off, you know, that would be the impact of it. Sometimes we can find times where there's a vacancy and we just don't fill it, and then that program doesn't run for the coming year. At this point, because it isn't my decision, it really is the Board of Education's ultimate decision, I'm really, you know, I can't give you specifics, we certainly would look, these are, this is how we look at it, the fewest number of students impacted, hopefully we can find that in a place where there's a vacancy so we don't impact an individual. We certainly, you know, are very aware of that, especially in these uncertain times, and that is typically how we look at it, anything that's non-impact with students has already been cut. So, you know, one thing that I would suggest after looking at the capital budget, if we're trying to get to a certain level, I would, I would say that we would probably look at from the capital budget, there's 185,000 in furniture, I would probably say that that is something that would, we would just hold off on that rather than in the staffing and program level impacting students.
So, with the virus situation, and let's say the kid's going later, how, how does that can impact the programming again, just in the summer?
No, I, well, what I'm saying is because I'm not, we really don't know how this will play out, both locally, nationally, we're just not sure how things would play out. I'm not sure if we would need to be available more in the summer because students have been out for a lengthy period of time. We could be back in two weeks, we may have to extend that. That's what we're hearing, that there is, you know, a likelihood that that may need to be extended, but again, it's a moment-by-moment decision. I would not be able to tell you today what I'm doing on Monday, I can't tell you what I'm doing next week. We get daily updates from the Farmington Valley Health District, from the DPH at the state level, and then there are also, you know, our national-level CDC recommendations, so things are moving very quickly. Certainly, I would say the 185,000 in capital, to me, makes sense in furniture because it really wouldn't impact programming, wouldn't impact individuals, maybe I, the other part of that is maybe not taking all of the summer school funding away, but again, that's a decision that is not something you have to consider, that's something that the Board has to consider. You give us the amount we have to reduce by, and then the Board of Education in collaboration with myself and other leaders in the district, you know, work together to try to figure out a way to go forward with a good plan for next year.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions for Kathy while she's up there?
Yeah, just quickly to clarify, so I know you don't understand, like, if this is gonna go beyond the two weeks, or what's gonna happen, or what else could happen, but just given the two weeks, does that mean for sure that we would have to have some funding in the summer school?
No.
No.
Not for this program, the funding for our students with IEPs and, you know, that need ESY, summer school is, would still be in the budget.
Okay.
So this is regular education, K-8, it impacts 225 students.
Gotcha, so the, but the non-special needs summer school funding, if that was still cut in the two, and we didn't go beyond two weeks, that would be okay, essentially? Like, that, those funds wouldn't be, wouldn't be needed, but if it went beyond two weeks, you're saying possibly additional funds would be needed?
I think that if it goes beyond two weeks, I think that, and we see how this all plays out, how, how things go forward. I stand here today saying, I think this would be okay if it was a two-week closure. I don't know, unfortunately, I mean, I, you know, just a few days ago, I thought that this was absolutely okay, and especially because we were seeing how this was playing out and would it be viable to even have summer programming for 225 students at that point. I guess what I'm saying is, with the unknowns, there may be a situation where we have to plan, not massive programming, but something, because this plays out in a way where we see an increase, but then we start to see it leveling off. I would think if we're out for an extended period of time, our parents or community would wonder what, what would be available since our children have been out. I'm just really not sure, and I, I wish I had a better idea at this point, but I don't think any of us know how this will proceed. You know, what we're hoping to achieve by being out is to level off, as all of you I'm sure have read, it's, you know, a strategy to level off the number of people, so there's a consistent number of people who have COVID-19 and not spikes because our hospitals and healthcare wouldn't be able to handle that. So we're really trying to do this as a community to try to, you know, deal with any spikes. We don't want to have spikes in individuals being diagnosed with that. So this is a strategy that right now is, is what we're doing, I don't know what the strategy will be going forward, I'm just not sure.
I understand, thank you.
Any other questions for the superintendent? And I do want to thank you, because obviously this is, we are all in uncharted territory. I know you've been in touch with all the proper authorities and are keeping current and up-to-date on everything that has been going on, and with everyone else, it's just a best guess at this point, we don't know what's ahead. Fortunately for the town in general, we do have a healthy reserve, if we're faced with issues, we do feel comfortable we can navigate waters. But I really appreciate your responses, I know, unfortunately, when a response is somewhat of a non-response, it's all you have, we don't have the facts right now, so I thank you for, you know, all the time you've put in thus far, and clearly what you've got to be putting in there.
And we're just, I have to say, we're fortunate, we work very closely with the town, and, you know, I have a great team, and, you know, our Board and Town Council all working together, you know, I, we've been through challenging times before, but we seem to get through it because we have the relationships we have with one another, so thank you.
Thank you, we don't want to keep upping the bar on the challenges, though.
No, no.
Okay.
So can I ask, CJ, can I ask Joe to do, yeah, Joe, could you run numbers for me with the Board of Ed budget 3.65% instead of 3.5?
Yeah.
Have him go backwards on his formula, so.
I anticipated something else, but I'll, I'll get, just give me a minute, I anticipated 3.64.
Six-four is fine, yeah, that's, yes, yeah.
That's a 210,000.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So can you give me all those numbers again?
So, we're going to, Board of Ed budget would then be 70,176,581, it's a 3.64% increase. That would bring your tax increase to 28.57 mills, a .6 mill increase or 2.16%. And I'm sorry, your overall budget would be 114,179,250 or 2.36% increase.
2.6?
2.36.
2.36.
The Board of Ed would be at 70,176,581, that's a 2,467,976 dollar increase, 3.64%. Overall budget would be 114,179,250, 2,636,173 or a 2.36% increase.
How many mills did you say that was again?
It would become 28.57 mills, that's a .6 mill increase or 2.16%.
Questions?
I would suggest that we amend the motion to include that additional funding.
So you'd like to make a motion, you'd have to actually make a motion.
Yeah, do we?
If you wanted.
Yeah, you have to make an amendment.
Okay.
You'd have to amend the motion to put another, how much did we just put that? What was the, the initial motion was 350?
Yeah.
Hold on a second. Just, let's just wait for a second, we need to vote on the.
No, we haven't, we don't vote on the initial motion if there's amendment, we've had discussion on the initial motion.
Right, he's making amendment to the motion, so he'd have to make his motion, the amendment, somebody has to second it, and then you would vote on the amendment, and then you would vote on the full motion.
And then the first amendment was, you did, you said to reduce the Board of Education budget, right?
Correct.
That was the first motion, that was the amendment.
Yeah, so now we should do it the same way, so.
Yeah, so maybe.
So the motion was to.
The motion was to reduce the Board of Education budget by $308,175. So if you would like to amend it, you would amend it to decrease the Board of Education budget by, proposed budget by 210,000.
No, no, not increase, it reduce.
Reduce.
Reduce it, yeah.
They're amended.
The motion was to reduce the budget, so you want to, you want to reduce the reduction.
You'd like to, you want to amend the motion?
Yeah, all right, I got it. Yep. And make a motion to reduce the amendment from $308,175,000 to 210,000.
Second.
This would be changing the overall increase of the Board of Education's budget from their original proposal of 3.96 to a 3.64 increase for the Board of Education. Are there any comments, questions, discussions on this amendment to the original motion? In fluid times, I think we're, we're looking at what's best for the long term, I think we can't obviously know what's ahead and how to deal with everything that's not in front of us right now, we're looking at what we're seeing, what's in front of us, what's current. So with that being said, I would feel comfortable with the 3.64, it's the same increase as the town side, it's, fortunately, we have a number of items that come in that make us comfortable overall with the tax increase. So with that, if there are no other comments on the amendment, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Not doing it.
The amendment passes. So now on the table is a motion to set the Board of Education's budget at a tax increase of 3.64, and, do you want to read what those numbers were, just to remind me, the total?
Sure.
Let Joe do it.
Yeah.
So now you amended the reductions, so now, so now you just have to vote on the original motion, which was to reduce the Board of Education budget by 210,000.
Yeah.
Second.
All right, I'll re-read that motion to make it a new one, okay. I make a motion to reduce the Board of Education's operating budget by 210,000.
Second.
Okay, discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes. Is our original motion still on the table? I think we still have the original motion of setting the budget, which we've now amended twice.
I think we've.
No, you're good.
You're good.
Okay, that was the original?
That was the original.
My apologies, okay.
If you're done at this point.
Okay, so we've.
You want to set the actual dollar amounts for each budget, so you should have.
Okay, so we've gotten through the Board of Education, okay.
Yeah. So now, so we're all clear, you've taken, you've done education, you've done the town, we're gonna do the debt service, we've done capital improvements, we're gonna have a motion for you for the defined contribution, so that will be there, that's what we're writing up for the total dollar amount, and then that's, that's, we've wrapped it up.
Okay. Hearing with us while we're writing up the motions.
I make a motion to set the budget with Board of Education at 70,176,581, the town at 31,478,237, debt service at 9,302,449, the capital expenditure budget at 3,171,983, Board of Ed defined contribution at 50,000 for a total appropriation of 114,179,250.
Second.
Discussion. Questions, comments?
Sure, so just say, just like to say that I support this budget, it's certainly a challenging budget year with not only coronavirus, and we have a, the FHS high school project going to referendum in the fall, it's certainly a challenging year, but I'm proud that we're able to maintain services in the town, and on the school side as well, we have a balanced approach that's meeting the needs of both the town and the Board of Education, we're making, we're still making good progress on our seven-year CIP plan, and I think this is a financially responsible budget that is going to help us as we approach the referendum on the school coming this fall, so I'm definitely in support of this budget.
Comments?
I just want, I just would like to add to everything that Ed just said, you took all my thunder, my friend, but I think it also shows that we as a council are looking at being fiscally responsible for the best needs of the town moving forward, again, given these times and given our goals, I'm glad that we can work together like this to do what's best for the town.
I'll just go on, I support this, this budget, it's a good budget, it keeps our town side in good shape, it gives our Board of Education at least all the funds.
It gives our Board of Education at least all the funds that they need to keep our students learning and under the right conditions and all the materials that they need. And for the future, I think it sets us up good with the, in terms of the debt service for our potential new high school project coming out. So I'm all in favor in this budget.
And I will also support the budget from a different perspective this time around, having previously sat on the Board of Ed. And I know these are challenging times for the town, the community, the Board of Ed, the council, with uncertain times in the, in the building project with the high school, which I think is a, you know, a very important project for us. I think we're in good stead. I think it's a responsible budget. But I'd really like to just reaffirm that I appreciate, you know, the collaboration between the council, the Board of Education, and Kathy in your office to get this done. It's a pleasure to work with everybody. So I think this is a good budget. I support it wholeheartedly and look forward to moving forward.
Go ahead, you want something?
Yes, I'd like to thank everybody that came out. Definitely Board of Ed, town, thank you for the cuts we've made. This, this was a little challenging this year, especially with what's going on. But I'm definitely in favor of this budget, and we'll move forward. And thank you for all the colleagues that we all work together.
I guess I'll clean up. Again, just like everybody says, thank you guys for everything you've done, all your work. I know time's coming up, maybe harder than what we think. So again, thank you for everything you've done. I support the budget. I don't want to see any child or citizen impacted by our cuts, so I think we're doing something fiscally responsible, and I hope that we can push this high school through to the next level.
And you clean up well, Joe.
Thank you. Looks good.
I'd like to say, it is, as we've said a number of times, first of all, I want to appreciate everyone who's coming out and come out to these meetings. I know we're trying to keep our social distancing, but it's very important we got through this process. When we began the process, there was a lot different than it is right now. I think what we're looking at here is a budget that's, we feel is very responsible, addressing the needs going forward. There could certainly be other needs, and we will address them when we are faced with them. So that being said, if there are no more comments, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes.
So now you have, the next item is to approve the warning. And just everyone, please make sure that you sign it. We'll send a copy around before you leave tonight.
So no one leave the table before you sign this piece of paper that Kathy, otherwise none of this happens, we've got to come back.
I make a motion to approve the warning of the April 27, 2020 annual town meeting and the May 7, 2020 referendum.
Second. Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed. Before we move on, I'll leave you with a quote from Henry Ford tonight. Coming together is a beginning. Staying together, progress. And working together, success. So thank you. With that.
Do we, okay, I didn't know if we had to be in session. I make a motion to adjourn this morning's meeting.
Second. Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed. Motion passes. We are adjourned.